Hello everybody and welcome to our debate tonight, School Board Member District 4. I have with me, first of all, I always like to introduce ladies first, Ms. Brenda McCoy-Hilton. Thank you for being with us, Ms. Hilton.
Thank you for having me, James.
And of course, the incumbent in the School Board District 4, Mr. Marcus Clements. Mr. Clements, thank you for being here.
Thank you sir for having us.
Okay, we're gonna get right to our opening statements. We'll go in alphabetical order. Mr. Clements, you'll go first, two-minute opening statement.
I'm Marcus Clements. Thank you for allowing me to serve on the School Board. We made much progress in the past 12 years. Our test scores are improving. Our graduation rate is increasing. We have great teachers and other staff members. We have great students. I had the great privilege today of attending at a civic club, a presentation by the Raider Brigade Jazz Band, about 23 students there. I was almost overwhelmed, not only at the great music, but the fact of the kids and their great moral character. They represent more than 6,000 kids in our school system. I am so very happy for our students as well as those who teach them. We've seen terrible economic times during the past few years, but with the cooperation of all of our staff, we've weathered the storm and we today are in much better financial condition. As of the start of school next year, this August, furlough days will only be a memory, when they will completely be eliminated from our school system. Thanks to the superintendents Jerry Hatcher and Rob Johnson, who has guided us through some rough seas and kept us on course during these tough economic times. We've been commended by various student financial advisors for restoring our financial condition and tonight, I'm happy that we're in much better condition than just a few years ago. There's only one reason that we must keep a strong financial base, that's to provide the best education possible for our children. I'm married to the former Martha Carter. On June 24th, we'll celebrate 49 years of married life. We have two daughters. Cheryl Gay is married to Darryl Gay. They have two children. Dylan is a 2010 graduate of West Lawrence High. He's a student now, will have his Artian degree in two semesters. His brother Miles graduated 2013. He's going to Georgia Southwestern University on a baseball scholarship he plans to teach. Our youngest daughter, Marla, is a teacher at Northwest Lawrence Elementary. Darren and Marla have two children. Cameron is a senior at West Lawrence High. He is class president and very active in school activities. Allison, our only granddaughter, God's greatest creation, is a sophomore at West Lawrence High. She is a member of the National Honor Society and is an avid tennis player. My dedication to the students of Lawrence County should be evident. I attend more than 100 school events each year. I'm available to anyone at any time. Since coming on the board, I've published my phone number, my home number, my office number, two email addresses, my fax number. I'm available to anyone that needs to talk about our school system. I gladly spend approximately 50 hours per month serving the students and the taxpayers of this county. Since coming on the board, I publish a newsletter every six months, trying to keep everyone informed of the actions of the School Board. I've had no personal financial gain from serving on the board. Please vote to continue progress in our school system by voting Marcus Clements, School Board District 4.
Thank you, Mr. Clements. Ms. Hilton, your two-minute opening statement.
I think that it is a time to take politics out of education and to make education of our students our number-one priority. I am Brenda McCoy-Hilton, candidate for Lawrence County Board of Education, District 4. I am a retired teacher with 30 years' experience in the Lawrence County schools. I have two daughters that are also teachers in the Lawrence County schools. I know the extent of the financial burden that was caused by the 36 furlough days over the past five years. It hit not only teachers, but pair of pros, secretaries, custodians, bus drivers, lunchroom workers, and I am extremely concerned about the effect of the missed instructional days. I have made a career of putting children first. In fact, I have probably taught many of you or your children, or you and your children. There are things that the employees of the Lawrence County Board of Education and the taxpayers may not know. There was no financial deficit in 2011, meaning no furlough days were needed and the increase in the millage was no longer needed. I have audited figures to prove my point, if you would like to hear them. In 2011, in reserve, the Lawrence County Board of Education had $3,779,730.20. 10 furlough days equal $1,750,000, meaning if they did not collect this money or save this money by furloughing teachers, the county school system would have still had $2,297,000. I would like to have your vote to put an educator on the board who understands what teachers go through and what parents go through, because I've had students, I have children who were students in the Lawrence County schools, I have grandchildren that are students in the Lawrence County schools. Vote for Brenda Hilton for Lawrence County Board of Education.
Thank you, Ms. Hilton. Okay, Mr. Clements, we're gonna start the question with you. Are you in favor of deeding the old West Lawrence High School to the Career Academy?
Not at this time. As most people know, four school systems formed a partnership to promote the Career Academy. After getting started out there, they realized there had a water pressure problem. We've been working with them to try to find a solution to this problem. We're in negotiation stage at this point. There's nothing on the table to be voted on now. We want the Career Academy to be successful and we're trying to find a way to make this happen. We've offered an easement on our property to get the water there and we're waiting on a response from those who seek this easement, seek this water. We want to work with them and make it happen so that Career Academy can succeed.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clements. Ms. Hilton, are you in favor of deeding the old West Lawrence High School to the Career Academy?
Not now and not ever. I have strong roots at West Lawrence High School. I think it would be a poor financial decision to deed the school to anyone.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Hilton. Coming back to you, Ms. Hilton, on this question. In light of the recent vote not to build two schools, where do we stand with a facilities plan? Where do we go from here?
I think that we need to take time, see what the public wants, have open discussions and forums, listen to different plans, and then come up with a plan that would be financially and educationally sound.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Hilton. Mr. Clements, in light of the recent vote not to build two schools, where do we stand with a facilities plan? Where do we go from here?
A facilities plan is a process. When the vote was taken last week, it put us back to forming a new facilities plan. There's steps that we must take. In the coming days, the Board and the superintendent will begin to work on a new facilities plan. It must be approved by the state. We don't just decide what to build without state input and state approval, without seeking funding from the state. This process could take months, it could take years, but we will, together as a board and the superintendent and the community, put together the next several months, a new facilities plan, make it widely known, seek input, and go forward with our facilities in this county.
Okay, thank you, sir. Coming back to you, Mr. Clements. Do you pay school taxes and do you think senior citizens should be exempt from paying school taxes?
I do pay school taxes. I, of course, live on Gordon Edwards Road and I pay school taxes on our property there. My business is located in the city limits of Dublin. I pay school taxes to the city of Dublin, gladly so. I have a small farm in Johnson County. I pay school taxes on that farm in Johnson County. So I'm paying school taxes in three different areas. There's a definite problem with senior citizens paying property tax or school property tax. I'm in favor of studying the possibility of phasing out the property tax and phasing in a educational splash that could be used for maintenance and operations of the school system. I understand that our state legislature would have to pass local legislation and I think there's a possibility to explore. Property tax is not a fair tax. Property tax is only shared by those who own property. A sales tax is much fairer and spreads the tax burden across to everyone who may be spending their money in our county. So the property tax for seniors must be addressed. I promise to address that. It'll have to be done in cooperation with our county commissioners, with our state representatives, and I think it's something we should look at.
Okay, thank you, sir. Ms. Hilton, do you pay school taxes and do you think senior citizens should be exempt from paying those school taxes?
I do pay school taxes. I own a home on one acre of land and I pay school taxes on it and I'm the only one in my family, so I'm the only one paying the school tax. As far as senior citizens are concerned, I think that it is the whole community that educates students. I think that if a senior citizen has difficulty paying or having enough money to pay for school taxes, things could be done to lower their tax rate, but when I get older, I hope that I am in the position that I can still pay school tax, because I want to help to educate all of the students, no matter what age or who they belong to.
Thank you, ma'am. Coming back to you, Ms. Hilton. If elected, what would be your single top priority?
Well, at this time, I think it would probably be the technology. I think that we need to incorporate and put the infrastructure in all schools so that we can all have technology and once that infrastructure is in, then to get the devices that are needed so that we can bring our students up to today's world and know what to do and how to use technology.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Clements, if re-elected, what would be your single top priority?
The school system faces many challenges. One of them has been mentioned by Ms. Hilton, it's certainly a need. My opinion, the single most important thing that we must keep in our mind is the graduation rate. We are failing if we're not graduating every student that enters ninth grade. We've seen improvements over the years, over the past several years, in our graduation rate, but if we're not graduating every student that enters ninth grade, we are failing. I want the graduation rate to be 100% in everything we do, whether it's technology, whatever we might be doing, it should increase our graduation rate and prepare our students to go into the workforce, to go to a trade school, or to go to college. If we don't graduate every student, we're missing something and I'm committed to increasing that graduation rate.
Okay, this next question, Mr. Clements, comes to you. I am a West Lawrence High School student. We never have enough books. Why?
That is a problem, is a challenge. We face several challenges in instructional books right now. Some we need to buy. We're living in a high-tech society and we're in the process right now of purchasing additional tablets and computers, if you will, for our high school students. We've been able to do that at East Lawrence High with the help of a grant. We're about to do it for West Lawrence High. While we're phasing out textbooks, we're having to phase in technology and it's a rough going right now. We will buy additional textbooks this year. We'll also buy some tech equipment this year. Fortunately, or unfortunately, in the years to come, there won't be many textbooks around. There'll be high-tech computers and laptops and iPads and tablets. So it's a challenge. It's a challenge to furnish the technology that's necessary. It's a challenge until that happens to be sure we're having a textbook and we're currently addressing both issues.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Hilton, I'm a student at West Lawrence High School. We never have enough books. Why?
I'm really not sure why you don't have enough books, because all of the money that has been available to buy books has not been used. In fact, I think that less than half of the money that was available to purchase books was used.
We're gonna take a short break. We'll be back right after this.
I believe in Marcus Clements.
I believe in Mr. Marcus.
We all believe in Marcus Clements.
With Marcus Clements, it's not about politics. It's about the 6,000 students of Lawrence County.
He supports our bands, attends our concerts, and loves our halftime shows.
Marcus Clements was instrumental on building better schools for us to attend.
Our test scores have steadily increased.
I see Mr. Marcus in and around our school often.
He's also a very good role model.
I'm Marcus Clements. Behind me are 20 students representing more than 6,000 that attended Lawrence County school system. This campaign is not about politics, it's about our children. Vote Marcus Clements, School Board, District 4.
Vote for Marcus Clements!
Welcome back, everybody. Let's continue with our question. Ms. Hilton, I'm coming to you. Why are my county taxes so low, but my school taxes are so high?
Well, James, I really don't know and I'm sad to say that I don't know. I can only speculate and I can go back, if I can just flip through my notes right here, and look at what happened in 2010, to see what happened to some money. In 2010, we were in a deficit and let me back up. In 2008 and 2009, the county school was in a deficit. In 2010, Marcus Clements and the rest of the board members voted to cut either 54 or 61 positions, which saved the county $4,875,000. They also cut teachers' pay, not just teachers, but everyone, 2%, which saved another $300,000. They increased the millage four points, which netted $2,750,000 and enacted six furlough days, which was another $1,050,000. So that was a total of $8,975,000. So I don't know why the tax rate is so high. I know why it was high that year and I also know that there are reserves now in the Lawrence County budget and in 2013, the reserve was about $6 million or a little bit more and projected that much now. I have not been able to figure out why there's so much money in reserve and we are taxing people too much.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Clements, why are my county taxes so low and my school taxes so high?
The Lawrence County Board of Education has 900 employees. We have a budget of $44 million. 89% of that $44 million are salaries and benefits for our teachers and other staff. I'm not sure of the budget of the Lawrence County Board of Commissioners, but it's much less than that. Their millage rate is less than that. They tax enough to fund their required budget. Like any school system, we tax what's necessary to meet the salary and benefits of our staff. We talked a moment ago about services. Most corporate CPAs recommend that you have 25% of your budget in reserve to meet unexpected expenses. If we had 25%, of course, we'd have $11 million in reserve. However, the state school auditors, they recommend a 15% cap on reserve. A 15% cap on our budget would be $7 million. We have approximately, as Ms. Hilton has pointed out, approximately $6 million. You have to remember, $6 million is less than 15% of our budget. Reserve is required, is mandated, in order to carry us through rough times. I'm happy that we're able to eliminate furlough days and we're back on sound financial footing. Should there be an unexpected financial emergency, it's only responsible as a businessperson to have enough reserves to pay our salaries, to pay our teachers, to pay our staff through rough times.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Clements, what is the most pressing issue facing our board today?
There is several, but the most pressing issue, even though we're doing better, is our financial status. We're much improved and I keep repeating that, I know. The most difficult years in our school system and other businesses, other governmental agencies, has been the last five or six years. The state of Georgia reduced funding to the Lawrence County school system by $25 million since January 1, 2003. 36 furlough days, as been mentioned here, was roughly 20% of the reduction that we got from the state. The Lawrence County school system absorbed $19 million in addition to the money saved through the furlough days. I think we've done a pretty good job, in spite of obstacles beyond our control, to maintain our staff, to pay them, to stay on a sound financial footing, and it's good for the taxpayers, it's good for the county, it's good for those who write our bonds and those who audit our books, to know that we are not carelessly spending money, that we do have reserves, that we can meet our obligation and have somewhat a reserve to meet unexpected emergencies.
Thank you, Mr. Clements. Ms. Hilton, what is the most pressing issue facing our board today?
I would like to say a rebuttal to what Mr. Clements said. I think that the teachers and the other employees of Lawrence County would beg to differ with him on a few points. One being that they have paid, or the school system has saved $6,300,000, $300,000 in the past five years with furloughing the employees and today, we have about $6 million in the bank. So I think the teachers have carried the weight of this surplus on their backs. Now, I think that one of the most pressing issues is the common core curriculum. I think that legislators are trying to dictate to teachers what to teach. They are not listening to the teachers and there's so much emphasis being placed on testing that there's not enough time for teachers to use their skills and creativity in the classroom to teach and to have students to enjoy and develop the love for learning.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Hilton, final question. Why, this comes from a viewer, why should I vote for you instead of your opponent?
I think the number-one reason is I am an educator. Education has been my life since I was in the first grade. I have been in school, I graduated from East Lawrence High School, I went to Georgia Southern, got three degrees, including a bachelor, a master's, and educational specialist degree in math education. I know what is needed in the classroom. I understand the curriculum. I understand what teachers go through. I am a taxpayer. I know how hard it is to pay. Education is my passion and my hobby. I have not had time throughout my life to join every organization that comes along, actually, very few organizations. My time has been spent educating, learning how to educate, and studying.
Thank you, Ms. Hilton. Mr. Clements, why should I vote for you instead of your opponent?
I want to compliment my opponent on her many years of teaching in the Lawrence County school system, first at East Lawrence and then many years at West Lawrence. School teachers have a most difficult job. They're under more pressure now than they ever have been. Anyone who dedicates their life to education deserves respect and honor for all they do for our children. The school system is all about education. That's what we do. However, there's a business aspect of a school system. I said earlier that our budget is $44 million, 900 employees. We need experienced businesspeople on the board. I think it's important to have someone that has experience in finance, in meeting a budget, in making payroll, in personnel management. Unfortunately, we're losing a businessman. Mr. Bell chose not to run and we're gonna miss him on the board as the businessman on the board. I think it's important to have a balanced board. I honor every educator. We have some of the best in the world, I believe, in Lawrence County, but we need businesspeople on the board, too. I believe, to answer your question directly, I believe I'm much more rounded in the education field, in the finance field, in the management of people. I have the big picture. I see it all. I have 12 years' experience. I have hundreds of hours of training, required mandated training, over the past 12 years. Every issue imaginable, I've been trained. I've sought out at my own expense many times to get the proper training. I believe I'm the right candidate. I ask you to consider all the aspects of what a school board member should be when you cast your vote on May 20.
Thank you, Mr. Clements. We're gonna take a short break, come back with closing comments.
It's time to take politics out of education and make education the number-one priority. I am Brenda McCoy-Hilton, candidate for Lawrence County Board of Education, District 4. I am a retired teacher with 30 years' experience in the Lawrence County schools. I understand the full extent of the burden caused by the 36 furlough days in the past five years. I am extremely concerned about the effect of the missing instructional days. I have made a career out of putting education first by educating many of you and/or your children. Vote for me, Brenda McCoy-Hilton, May 20.
Welcome back to our debate, School Board District 4. Our closing comments, we go to you, Ms. Hilton.
Hi. I just want to say that being before camera and before people like a large group is foreign to me. I am most comfortable when I am with a group of teenagers in a classroom doing my job. So a lot of times tonight, I've gotten tongue-tied, but I know the facts. I understand the business. I have studied, I know math, which has a lot to do with business, but I want to close by giving you the essence of an article that my daughter insisted that I read. It is about a very successful businessman who thought that he knew how to run a business and since he ran that business so well and he could motivate his employers to produce an A1 product, that he could tell teachers and principals and superintendents how they should run the school. He was invited to come to an in-service day. He got up and gave his spiel. He told how he could run the school, how he ran his employees, how everything turned out perfectly and if they would do what he said, that things would be so much better. At the end of his talk, there was a silence. Finally, a teacher in the back raised her hand and said, "So, Mr. Businessman, know it all? If you received from your supplier a box of rotten blueberries to go in your grade-A ice cream, what would you do?" He said proudly, "Send it back, of course." She said, "There lies the problem. Teachers have to teach all children. We cannot send back our rotten blueberries, no matter where the students come from." We cannot send back our rotten blueberries, no matter where the students come from, no matter what their abilities are, no matter how smart they are, no matter how much support at their home they have, or what a rough life they have at their home, no matter how motivated they are or how unmotivated they are. We have the job to teach them. We are not running a business and we should not be treated as we are running a business. Teachers should have the ability to go in the classroom, use their abilities, their knowledge, their creativity, and teach their students." Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hilton. Mr. Clements, your two-minute closing statement.
My family and I have been a part of this community for 41 years. It's the place we chose to raise our family. It's a great place to live, a great place to worship, a great place to go to school. I'm happy to have been a part of the Lawrence County school system for many years. Much has been accomplished, much needs to be accomplished. We have a great school system and a great group of teachers, a great staff, a great group, 6,500 students, some of the best in the world. I have hundreds of hours of training in school policy, school finance, school governance. All of this is important, all of this is necessary. However, the overwhelming responsibility is the 6,000, 6,000 students for which we are responsible. It's a great responsibility and I don't take it lightly. I promise you, if reelected, I will continue to put the interests of our children first. Friends, this school board race is not about politics. It's not about who's loyal to this political party or who's loyal to that political party. It's not about who has the best slogans and the best cases. This race is about our children. And let's please stay focused on our children. Children from pre-K to graduation, children who get little instruction at home and look to us for guidance, children undecided about their life choices, seeking help, children who only need a hug to make it through the day, children who will soon be taking great places of responsibility in our community. We must not fail our children. I am committed to graduating every single student. The primary responsibility of the school board is to ensure the best possible education for our children. However, we need a business person on the Board. For, for many years, I was employed by the largest life insurance company in the world. In addition to sales and sales management, I have experience in auditing, budget preparation, personnel management. 13 years ago, I became president of Clementine King Insurance and Financial Services. In addition to life and health insurance licenses, I've held security licenses, uh, security boards. I've been registered for many years with the National Association of Security Dealers. I've been, I have experience in managing the business. I have experience in meeting a payroll. I ask for your vote. If you believe I'm the best person to serve the people of the fourth district, then I ask you to vote for me. If you value experience, if you believe 12 years' experience is important as we face the challenges of tomorrow, I ask you to vote for me. I admit I'm not a great politician, but it's not about politics. It's about our children. I promise you this, if reelected, I promise no one will love your children more than I will. I promise you, there'll be no one in this county more available to you than I will. As a follower of Jesus Christ, I promise honest, open representation to you. I will never compromise my Christian principles for political gain. Please vote for Marcus Clements, School Board, District Four.
Thank you, Mr. Clements. Thank you, Ms. Hilton. Don't forget, the election, the primary is May 20. If you would like to vote absentee, you can go ahead and request that today at the Lawrence County Register's office. You must have that absentee ballot to the Register's office by election day. The last day to request an absentee ballot is May 16. Also, don't forget, advanced voting starts April 28. Thank you for joining us.